Okay. Welcome, everyone. This meeting will be held in accordance with California Government Code Section 59453, subdivision of the Ralph M. Brown Act, California Government Code Section 54950, Series Resolution Number 202221, and the Federal Americans with Disabilities Act. Zoom information was posted on the agenda. Remote public comment is also available for the City Council Meeting by emailing the city clerk at cityclerk@ci.series.ca US before 4:00 PM the day of the meeting. Include the Agenda Item Number or Public Comment period in the subject line of the email. The clerk may read written comments into the record if specifically requested to do so at the beginning of your email. Your written comment will be distributed to the City Council and kept on file as part of the official records of the council meeting. If you have any questions on how to attend virtually or encountering any difficulties connecting to the meeting, please contact the city clerk at 209-646-4812 or by emailing the city clerk at cityclerk@ci.series.ca.us. As many of you may know, we had had malfunctions of the video sound system at the inside the council chambers on April 11th council meeting. The issue is preventing the use of microphones, speakers, and video. A repair is in the works, and we hope to have the system up and running by the May 9th meeting. Welcome, everybody, to our regular scheduled meeting today, Monday, April 25th, 2022. I now call this meeting to order. May I please get a roll call?
Councilmember Casey.
Here.
Vice Mayor Silveira.
Here.
Councilmember Klein.
Here.
And Mayor Lopez.
Here. We have an invocation by Pastor Jim Stotch from the Harvest Presbyterian Church. Is he present today?
He is present, Pastor Stotch.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I guess so. All right. Thank you, Mayor Lopez. Let's pray. But thanks for our wonderful community and our dedicated leadership, our hardworking staff, our tremendous volunteers, our families and friends and our neighbors. Bless tonight's meeting and bless our community, and we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. If you would like, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. On count of three, one, two, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Today, we have a few presentations. We'll begin with a proclamation declaring Saturday, April 30th, 2022 as Love Series Day in the City of Series. This proclamation will be accepted by Brandy Meyer. I do have Councilmember Casey who will read the proclamation today. Councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of the mayor of... Whereas the City of Series proudly promotes a healthy, safe, and vibrant community and is dedicated to delivering excellent service and engaging in meaningful public participation. And whereas the vision, mission, and values of Love Stanislaus County doing business as Love Series align with the vision, mission, and values of the City of Series. And whereas the month of April is recognized in the United States as volunteer appreciation, and whereas government alone cannot meet all the city's needs, so we partner with business, faith-based organizations, nonprofit organizations, foundations, and individuals who serve in our community and make a difference. And whereas the City of Series is committed to encouraging volunteerism among its employees, citizens, partners, businesses, and organizations. And whereas by volunteering and recognizing those who serve, we promote partnership, understanding, cooperation, problem-solving in our community. Therefore, it is further proclaimed and ordered that the last Saturday in April each year be recognized in the City of Series as Love Series Day, and residents of Series are urged to volunteer on this day as proclaimed by our mayor Javier Lopez on this date, the 25th day of April, 2022. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. And we do have, believe we have Brandy Meyer on the line. If we do not, we will make sure she receives the proclamation. But she is, there you are. Any comments, Brandy?
No, I would just like to thank you for this proclamation. This Saturday is Love Series. We have over 100 volunteers signed up so far and counting. We're getting new volunteers every day, so we're very excited. And we'll be meeting at Woodward Park at 8:00, and we appreciate the support of the council and our mayor and our city staff. So thank you very much for the proclamation. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Brandy. I do appreciate this. Second, we have a proclamation declaring April as Seek Awareness Month, and this will be received by Benny. Declaring April 2022 Seek Awareness and Appreciation Month, whereas Sikhs have been living in the United States for more than 120 years, and during the early 20th century, thousands of Sikh Americans worked on farms and labor mills and mines and on the Oregon Pacific and Eastern Railroad. And whereas Sikhism is the fifth largest religion in the world, and today there are more than 25 million Sikh worldwide, and an estimated 500,000 Sikh Americans. And whereas Sikh Americans pursue diverse professions and make rich contributions to social, cultural, and economic diversity of the United States, including service as members of the United States Armed Forces and significant contributions to our great nation in agriculture, information technology, small business, the hotel industry, trucking, medicine, and technology. And whereas Sikh Americans distinguish themselves by fostering respect among all other people through their faith and service. And whereas the City of Series is committed to educating citizens about world religions, the values of religious diversity, tolerance, grounded in First Amendment principles, a culture of mutual understanding, and the diminution of violence. And whereas today, the City of Series seeks to further the diversity of its community and afford all residents the opportunity to better understand, recognize, and appreciate the rich history and shared experience of the Sikh Americans. Now, therefore, I, Javier Lopez, Mayor of the City of Series, on this day, 25th day of April 2022, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2022 to be Seek Awareness and Appreciation Month. Thank you very much. Benny, are you online?
Yes, I'm on.
Any words, comments?
Yeah, I just want, on behalf of the Sikh community, I just want to thank the City of Series and its residents. I know our Sikh temple here in the town, right off the hatch, plays a big role in this community, so want to thank that, thank all you guys, and look forward to going with you guys all.
Thank you, Benny. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Our last proclamation, proclamation declaring May 1st through the 7th as Public Service Recognition Week. Whereas Public Service Recognition Week is celebrated for first week of May nationwide, and it is a time to set aside to honor those who served our nation as federal, state, county, and local government employees, where our community is served every single day by public servants, whereas our community is served every single day by public servants and public employees who take not only jobs but oaths. And whereas nearly 173 hard-working, talented people are employed by the City of Series, and whereas many public servants risk their lives each day in service to the people of the community, as well to provide public safety, operate and maintain our public facilities, and provide the diverse service to our residents with integrity and efficiency. And whereas the City of Series recognized generous contributions of the time and talent by public employees and the importance of service they render, now therefore be a resolve, I, Javier Lopez, Mayor of the City of Series, do hereby proclaim Week May 1st through the 7th as Public Service Recognition Week in the City of Series, along with the City Council, express gratitude to the dedicated City of Series employees' ongoing commitment to serve our community. Thank you very much. Any other comments? Thank you. We're going to go ahead and move on to citizens' communication. While the City Council welcomes and encourages participations in City Council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes Resolution Number 2007106 for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the City Council and not on posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the City Council from taking any action on any matters which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the City Council. Citizens are entitled to address the City Council on any agenda items, subject to the five-minute provision. Anyone wishing to address the City Council must adhere to the rules of decorum. The rules of decorum are posted outside the chamber doors. If we can go ahead and start with any Zoom comments?
Have one, we have two hand raises. David Yonin, I will unmute your mic.
David?
Yes, can you hear me?
We're going to go ahead and raise your volume, then we'll go ahead and...
Yes, let me know when you can hear me.
Yeah, go ahead, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you.
We can hear you.
I'm sure as citizens of Series, we're all enjoying the new Walmart. My question is in regard to the old Walmart. It seems like the Walmart Corporation has kind of left us with what's slowly but surely turning into a homeless encampment. All those cars you see in the old Walmart parking lot, they're not waiting for the store to open. There are people living in those cars. If you go down on Hatch Road, past the McDonald's, and you see five or six shopping carts and people laying out on the lawn, a lot of them move back and forth between the lawn area by McDonald's and the parking lot. What I'd like to ask is the city attorney, if he can address this situation with Walmart, that they've left the city with this problem of these slowly but surely turning into a homeless encampment. The police have done a great job when called. Police are out there, no time at all, can't say enough good things about the police department in the city, but not knowing how long this is going to go on, if it's going to go on for years before that place gets filled, seems like the police got more important things with real crime than addressing a social issue of the homeless going into this vacant parking lot. Wondering if the city attorney can address this with Walmart, either by making them reimburse the city for dealing with this issue, or put a six-foot chain length fence around the entire facility so that it, people can't get in and out. Something's got to be done. Like I said, the city agreed to the new Walmart, but we're left with this old Walmart that's slowly but surely deteriorating and becoming a huge problem. I think Walmart should be responsible for mitigating this and covering the cost of it. I know they don't know anything about it. When I talked to the security guard, he's either parked by the automotive days, asleep in his car, and he's kind of a, he's going to call the fire department if the place catches on fire, but short of that, he's been told not to deal with the, the actual people issue other than when there's a complaint, he'll, he'll call the police. So the city could look into that, much appreciated. Like I said, the few times I've called the police department, they've done a great job. Thank you, and that's all I've got.
David, thank you very much for your comments. I know that this is not just happening at Kmart. We're doing everything we can to try to mitigate this. I believe that if the city attorney does have some questions, that we can probably discuss this. I don't know if the city manager has any comments, but this most definitely will be addressed, David, so thank you for your comments.
Candace Fernandez, I will unmute your mic.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Candace Fernandez, I live in District 3 on Golfing Road in Series. I would like to address the current zoning code at River Oaks. At the time the zoning code at River Oaks was changed from recreational to mixed-use MX, none of the property owners on Golfing Road received written notification that the City of Series would be changing the zoning code on their properties. We were first made aware of the change during a meeting with city staff a few years ago. Since that time, the property owners have been given varying verbal information regarding notification. And when the zoning change to MX2 was, and when the, don't miss, you know, varying information on when the actual change to MX2 occurred, I was told by city staff that the best they can tell, the change was made when the Mitchell Road Corridor was adopted or amended sometime between August 28, 1989, and September 25, 1995. Other property owners have told me that, they were told the change was made when the Mitchell Corridor Plan was last amended sometime after 1995. I know on the Mitchell Corridor Plan, the last amendment I see is 1995, but there again, if someone was told that it was after that time, I'm not aware, or I'm not sure what that date is. The owners have been told it is the city's practice to mail written notification to property owners of zoning changes. When I talked to city staff and told them that none of the property owners had received written notification regarding the zoning change, I was told that probably a notice was put in the local newspaper instead of letters being sent. That would be a problem because Series Courier does not deliver the paper to Golfing Road, and I have confirmed that with the Series Courier. The Courier did tell me that sometime in or after 2020, they started mailing printed copy of the paper to subscribers, and I know as well, the paper is now available online. Because of the varying verbal information the property owners have been given regarding the MX2 zoning change, I'm asking the council to confirm in writing, so we have it in writing, when and how the property owners were notified of the zoning change, and also when the zoning change from recreational to MX2 was actually made. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't think it should be a problem looking into that. Alex, if we can take a note of that, please, and then we'll see what we can do from there. Thank you. Is there any other persons on Zoom?
Yes, we have two more. Kenneth Thornberry, I will unmute your mic.
Hello, and thank you for this time. I would like to reach out on a couple matters, items number 12 and 13, and others, of course, but I want to take this time to thank Linda Rhino. Ms. Rhino has served our community very faithfully for quite some time. So Linda, thank you very much for your time and effort. The other is going on.
Mr. Thornberry, I don't mean to interrupt you. You said you wanted to discuss item number 12 and 13. When we get to those items, we can go ahead and pull those items if you want to discuss during that time.
No, I don't, I'm not asking you to pull those items. I was just going to make a statement if that's acceptable. If not, I can wait.
You're more, you're more than welcome to.
Okay. Yeah, well, number 12, that's the Linda Rhino statement I just made, and 13, Resolution Number 2022-37. Is there a place where I can review and look at the, the employment agreement for Alex Tarazas? And the other is, is just back on River Oak Golf Course. We've donated our resources and time to bring River Oaks Golf Course and Event Center to our community as a great and affordable, clean entertainment center for all ages. We have the first tea and national organization for youth, quite active there, and we have, weekly, we have Senior Citizen Thursday, half price for seniors. Weekly, we have half price for first responders. So that, you know, I'm not here to take up a lot of time. You guys have a long agenda. I would like to, really impressed that we, we need to move forward with how we're going to fill the fifth seat, because we have no intention of sitting on our hands for indefinite period of time. We've put on hold all of our family resources to the improvements of the River Oak Golf Course until we find out whether this is going to be a warehouse complex or something we can continue to build out as a resource in the, in the community, as a golf course and, you know, a center, an event center, a place for old and young to enjoy, to gather in peace. So at that, I would like to really hear your, your intentions on filling the seat for District 2. Thank you very much, and that's all.
Thank you. Christina, you said you had one more person?
Yes, Brandy has her hand raised. Brandy, I will unmute your mic.
Thank you. First of all, now that the proclamation has been presented, I did want to mention that we didn't do this by ourselves, so I do want to recognize our committee as well. I would like to thank my husband Keith Meyer, Pastor Jim Stockle, Christopher Home and Anthony Sims from the City of Series, Pastor Ryan Gwynn, Aaron Yanagi from Series High School, Gary M. Condit from Condit Productions, Pastor Jim Hannah, Youth for Christ, Ken Sylvia, and Pete Kirchhoff, Big Valley Grace Pastor Tim Janosa, and one of our project leaders, Beth Stockle. I would also like to thank Brian Marks from Love Stanislaus County and Jeff Pishney from Love Our Cities, because this is going to be a project that has had a lot of volunteers and a lot of help, so I just wanted to make sure that everybody gets their due credit for being part of the committee and helping out. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brandy.
There are no more hand raises.
Okay, if we can go back to members at the dais, I believe, is there anybody, Christopher, who would like to speak?
Yes, there is. Start with John Warren.
Go ahead. Good evening, council members. Since May 1st through the 7th is recognized as a Public Service Recognition Week, I want to remind the council and, and the general public, it's also Peace Officer Memorial Week in recognition of the peace officers in the state of California and around the nation who have lost their lives and given their lives for the safety of the citizens of our community. On May the 4th, at the Lakewood Memorial Park, will be the Stanislaus County Peace Officer Memorial Celebration for those officers within our county and our city. So I would hope that some of you, if not all, could attend that ceremony. It starts at 10:00 in the morning, and we would be grateful for your attendance. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Christopher, any more?
Yes, Jean Yankley.
Yeah, Jean Yankley, Series. I'd like to address something that's been ongoing for a long time in City of Series when it comes to expenditures. I looked at the latest expenditures, and there's a lot of vandalism in our parks in some other areas in town. And just adding the numbers, it must be, I don't know what they accumulate, because there's different months and different times that things happen, but it'd be interesting if, if, I understand there's some space that's reserved for the people of Series and the Series Courier through Jeff Benzer, and I'd like it to see the public getting a chance to find out how much we're actually spending on a monthly basis on vandalism. And, and also address those people, if they see something, say something, just like Rick Collins and a lot of people on the police department always have something to say about that. If you see something, say something, and maybe we can stop some of this. Hopefully, we won't put a dent in all of it, but we can put a dent in some of, and if it could be printed out in the newspaper or on the city's website somewhere, where the people can find out how much we're spending each month on different things, that don't have to be a whole list that's printed out, I mean, it's quite long, but I think the liability of what people see in vandalism in the city and how much it's costing the taxpayers to take care of all those issues and the man-hours and the parts they have to buy, and it's just tremendous. So if we could get something in the, in the website and, and maybe, you know, on a mail or inside a utility bill a couple times a year or something to make people aware of what's going on and how some people just don't have control of their kids, or if that is their kids that are doing it, or other people from out of town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any more speakers, Chris?
Yes, one more. Louis.
Welcome, Louis.
Yeah, thank you. I, I just moved here to Series about four, five years ago, and I've been, I've been looking around, you know, I like to walk in the mornings and Saturdays and Sundays, and, and one thing that I like to do is, is also play tennis. And, and I, you know, I kind of look around, and I don't see any, any tennis courts, and but I do see a lot of, a lot of recreation parks for the kids, and which is good, and I was thinking if it was possible that the city maybe come up with maybe one or two tennis courts, because, you know, that's also good for the old, for the elder people. You know, I come from the Bay Area, and over there, you know, you see a lot of older people playing there, because it's, you know, it's good for them. And also, and also another thing, too, is the, they kind of combine the tennis courts and racquetball, kind of like together. So, you know, that racquetball is about the same as, as tennis, so I was just wondering or kind of asked, see if it was possible, the city kind of do something like that. That's, that's all. Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, I believe we do have one tennis court, if I'm not mistaken. Alex, is that correct?
Mayor Lopez is Sam. Yes, we do have a tennis court. It's in the Roeding Heights, Roeding Heights Park.
Sounds good. Thank you for your comment.
No problem.
Is there any other members of the public who would like to make a comment?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Christina, do we have any emails?
We have one email. It is, yes. It is from Shirley Rogers of Series. It says, "To Series City Council, I received my utility bill with a late charge of $13.40. I mailed the check to City of Series Post Office Box at 1400 Sisson City, California on March 28th, and it wasn't posted until April 6th. I looked on my past bills for utilities to Series, and it is taking an average of seven to nine days for them to post the money to my bill. This was the first time in 47 years that I had a late charge on the utility bill. I tried every way possible to find the name of the company processing the checks in Sisson City. I was totally unable to get any information. When I asked the City Finance Department about the late charge, she simply told me you have to mail it earlier. So because I wanted to complain about the late charge, I went ahead and paid the current utility bill with a credit card online the same day I received it. I believe to charge me $13.40 for a payment because it was one day late, when it was mailed nine days earlier is totally unacceptable. I realized there's many ways to pay the bill in person, in the Dropbox, and online, but I chose to mail my bills. I would like to know why our utility bills, if mailed, are going to Sisson City and not the City of Series. We have a financial department. Are they incapable of collecting mail? They seem to do just fine with the Dropbox in person and online. So I ask again, why can't Series Finance Department handle the mail? Payments should be sent to the Post Office Box in Series. I also would like to know how much it is costing to farm the bills out. I contacted the city, and I have not been contacted back as of yet when I left a message. It is said it would take up to 10 days to answer me." Thank you for your time. I expect an answer to at least part of the questions I have asked. And there's other people concerned about this also I've come across for people who have chosen to pay their bill in a different way because of the late charges. Shirley Rogers, Community Corps, Series.
Thank you, Christina. I believe we did address this. Letitia, I believe you did address this correctly, at least partially.
Yes, I spoke to Mrs. Rogers and heard her concerns and I explained the process to her. And she was satisfied with, with the response I gave her.
Thank you.
And we do. Sorry, go ahead.
Say that one more time. Say that last part.
I was gonna say, we did waive her late fee.
Okay, yeah, Shirley did email me and Alex and I forwarded to Letitia and that was the result. So thank you very much for, for emailing that to us. Is there any, any other emails?
There are not.
Okay, I have to ask, was there any phone calls?
No, no phone calls.
No phone calls. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, seeing no, no more public comments. The public comment period is now closed. There's no appointments to boards, commissions, and is there anyone on the council that would like to declare a conflict of interest? Seeing none. Moving on to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by the individual council member or public for special consideration. Otherwise, a recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by a roll call vote. Is there anyone in the council that would like a consent item pulled for further discussion?
Casey, member, council member Casey, number seven.
Number seven? Okay, and I will be pulling item number nine. Any members of the public that would like to pull, pull an item?
Uh, we have a member of the public that would like to pull items number eight and number ten.
Eight and number ten. Anybody on Zoom? Just to make sure, there's no hands up?
No, there are no hands raised.
Okay. Counsel, can we get a motion for the rest of the items?
Move through one through six on the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Silbera.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Okay. Item number seven. Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash thirty-three, adopting the concurrence with Stanislaus Urban County Conservancy FY twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Annual Action Plan in Support of Submission to HUD. Councilmember Casey?
Sure. The reason I wanted to call is because it's come up in other council meetings. The, there was a public hearing tonight at five PM. No one showed up. So there was no public hearing. No one showed up because probably no one knew about it as far as the general public. It's an issue that was addressed earlier in the meeting about corresponding to the general public. I think it's important that we develop some sort of newsletter that goes out in maybe in the utility bill uh, that lets people know what's going on. Not everyone has Facebook, not everyone goes online. Well, like this week's agenda for various reasons wasn't available until sometime on Thursday. So it's not, it's not, uh, we, if we want the public input, somehow or another, we need to get the information out to them. And that's, that's the reason I wanted to pull item number seven.
Thank you, council member. Any members of the public that would like to make a comment on item number seven?
John Warren, City of Series. I have to concur with Mr. Casey. I'm on the automatic agenda to receive notices when there's public hearings such as tonight's meeting. And if there's a change and an amendment, I, I also receive a notification. So I can go online and look and see if, if there's a meeting coming or looking at the agenda of that particular meeting. And as far as resolution number two, zero, two, two, dash three, three, nothing was received. So Mr. Casey is entirely correct. You can't get public participation unless the public is made aware of what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the, inside the dais that would like to make a comment on item number seven? Any members on Zoom that would like to make a comment on item number seven?
There is one hand raised. Mr. Osgood, I will unmute your mic.
Yeah, I just want to say I concur with Mr. Casey and Mr. Warren. I too received those alerts. I didn't receive an alert about any public hearing at five PM. Not to mention, we are a bedroom community of the Bay Area, gentlemen. No reason to be, be scheduling public hearings for five PM. Actually, it's malfeasance and dereliction of duty. The people cannot participate in a government that holds meetings while the majority of us are traveling on the, the Altamont Corridor. Even schedule that meeting was, was at five PM, unacceptable. These are some of the things I've been asking for to be addressed and, and, and moved in a different direction for over a year now. And possibly it's time that we hold public things on uh, seven PM schedule or, or even six PM like we do the council meetings. It, it, it kind of slaps us in the face to tell us it's at five PM and, and show up. Y'all know well, we can't do that. We're not employed by the government in Stanislaus County. Thank you.
Christina, any other members on Zoom with their hands raised?
There are no more hands raised.
Okay, I bring this back to the council if we can get a motion.
Move to approve number seven on the consent calendar.
I'll second it. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Silbera.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Moving on to item number eight, resolution number twenty twenty-two thirty-four, authorizing the city to continue teleconferencing public meetings pursuant to Assembly Bill three six one, allowing the city to continue a hybrid virtual meeting environment. I believe one of the members of the public pulled this item, correct?
That's correct.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. John Warren, City of Series. Um, monthly, this particular resolution comes forward to the council to continue with the teleconferencing, uh, Zoom meetings and, and make it as a, uh, an option for the people to attend via Zoom or in person. Public meetings should be, number one, held in person. The option should be for Zoom. Zoom should not be a requirement. If something breaks or whatever, that's an exception to the rule as we're dealing with in the last couple of weeks. Uh, so it, it is an option for the public. But like tonight, some accommodations were made for members of the public here tonight at the building and there's four of us. And so I would recommend with this particular, uh, resolution that the Zoom portion be an option only and not be a requirement. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other members of the public that would like to make a comment on item number eight? Do we have anyone on Zoom that would like to make a comment on item number eight?
There is one hand raised. Mr. Osgood, I will unmute your mic.
Thank you.
Maybe this is more a question for, for Mr. Hallinan, but I do believe that the, that the state statute now requires a hybrid meeting, does it not? Is our city attorney not available because we're on Zoom?
Pardon me. No, the hybrid meeting is optional.
Okay, so as Mr. Warren says, we could go to a, a strictly public meeting if, if we so choose.
Yes.
But we're, but we're choosing to continue the hybrid concept that was established when Mr. Westbrook reopened the public attendance, correct? Tonight's what we're doing?
Correct.
Okay, I'm okay with that. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Any other hands, Christina?
There are no more hands raised on Zoom.
Bringing this item back for discussion to the city council. Do we have any?
Yeah, I just saw one hand go up.
There's one more hand.
Sure.
Mr. Thornberry, I will unmute your mic.
I apologize for the late, but as of just a bit ago, we were told that we wouldn't be allowed in person in, in the chambers. So I would like to, like to clarify what the Zoom teleconference public meetings pursuant to Assembly Bill three thirty-sixty-one, allowing the city to continue hybrid. Will we or will we not be allowed in the chambers?
You will be allowed in the chambers and tonight when we had difficulties, accommodations were made to still allow people to attend at the chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Hallinan.
You're welcome.
Okay. Bring this back to council for a discussion. Uh, council members? Any comments?
Yes, I have one. With the exception of tonight, the city council members will be held in the chambers. And that is the way I'm going to address it. Is that correct? Hello?
Is this a question for Hallinan?
Yes. Or you, whoever, or Alex, whoever wants to, to answer the question.
I, I personally will, I will agree with Warren and, and Mr. Osgood. I think that, uh, we should be in person and that Zoom option available because unfortunately with our situation, there's been times where I could, I could most, we could have most definitely as a council shut down the meeting, but we choose the virtual option with our phones. And I think that wasn't the best approach. Um, but I, I think there's members of the public that would like to, to be on Zoom just to listen in, but without interfering with our meetings. So I personally believe we should go back to, uh, go back to in-person meetings with the option of Zoom without the resolution. It's my opinion.
And you're, and you're talking Zoom if the audio at the, at, at the, in the chamber is not non-operable?
If, no, what I'm, what I'm suggesting is if, if we oppose today's resolution that we should have in-person, obviously we'll have to have in-person meetings and per the Brown Act. Um, we would have to have, if anybody was remote, they would have to post that online to tell everybody where they are. Um, but I still believe that we could have a Zoom option that's not per the resolution. So members can still view our city council meetings. But that, that, but it won't interfere with our meetings if something happens and we have to stop the meeting because of Zoom. But I think that we most definitely would at least try if we have members that are having issues. I personally believe we most definitely do everything in our power to make sure that they are able to listen in. Any other comments? Counsel?
Move to approve number eight on the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silbera.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Okay. Move into item number nine. The reason I pulled this item is because I got word that there was an applicant request. Uh, Christopher, if you could please address that?
Sure. Um, in this case, the applicant requested, uh, the continuance of this item to the next city council meeting, which will be May ninth.
And before we move on to the council, is there any comments from the public on item number nine?
I don't see any.
Okay, is any, any members on Zoom with their hands?
No, there are no hands raised.
Okay, I bring this back to the council. Um, as per Christopher, the applicant is requesting for this item to be moved to a later date. Um, we just need a motion to continue this item. Well, actually, this is actually for May ninth.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silbera.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Item number ten. Resolution number twenty twenty-two thirty-six, approving an enterprise service agreement with Vigilant Solutions for the term of one year in conjunction with the pursuit's purchase of a three-year mobile license, plate reader and authorizing city manager to execute the service agreement.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Council, John Warren, City of Series, my question here was um, with the ARP funding that the city received, um, last year in May, there was a certain amount of, uh, dollar that were set aside for this specific item. The purchasing of, uh, cameras with license plate readers and, and a contract. And so I was wondering if this resolution was involving those funds or our regular budget item?
I'll, uh, jump in on this, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Thank you. Go ahead.
The ARPA funds are for a different LPR project, which will consist of our intersections and certain parks and other city facilities in town. This purchase is being funded through Measure H and will go on our patrol cars to read license plates as we're out in the field.
Okay, thank you. So these are patrol car cameras and not cameras that would be used uh, and a fixed or a mobile in, like on a light pole around the city.
That is correct, Mr. Warren.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Do we have any members of the public that would also like to make a comment on this item?
Yes, mayor. One more.
Thank you.
Gene Yankley, Series. Probably Chief Collins can answer this question. Boy, that resolution and all the information for that Vigilant Solutions for the license plate readers, oh man, it's quite lengthy and consuming to read. Uh, my question is, is that from what I understand from reading all that is that the cities will contract to, or Series will contract for three license, um, or mobile license plate readers. My question is, is, and it says that they're only going to train with this cost, the initial cost, they're only going to train three people. So how, it, it's a good benefit, but how are we going to, uh, stretch this out to where, you know, twenty-five hours a day, this thing can be used? And, uh, how much is it going to cost for, uh, the maintenance after, uh, the contract is, uh, I guess expired, that there's a maintenance for only so many years on these card, uh, on these license plate readers? So how many officers are going to be out there? If there's only three that are trained with the, with initial payment, are they going to pay to have more officers trained on the system? And is the system going to be out on every shift? So are they going to call somebody that's been trained, says you got to come in now, we need to chase some cars and read? I mean, it's ridiculous, but it's a scenario to think about. And, uh, that's all I'd like to know. Maybe the chief can answer some of those.
I'll do my best, Mr. Yankley. Um, the, the three officers that will be trained, they have the ability to train others in the system. So everybody in the department will get the training. And I believe the annual maintenance for the software that allows us to do our investigative stuff is seventy-five hundred dollars a year for an agency our size.
Does that include, uh, all, if something breaks down that, uh, the vigilance to come and fix it?
Yes, there are, there are warranties attached to the contract.
So, yeah, it kind of made it sound like on the, on the agreement there that, you know, through the resolution that there's only going to be through the resolution that there's only going to be paid for three officers. I don't, maybe I didn't read it that other officers could, uh, train others to to qualify to use the reader.
Yeah, I have, uh, Lieutenant Perry on as well if he has more information. He was a project manager on this on this, uh, but I believe that is correct. Our three officers can train the other officers within the department. So everybody can receive the training.
So even though we don't have them now, how's that going to affect a shift? I mean, there's four quadrants in the city, uh, patrol areas. So how's this going to affect each officer in a different area? If there's only three, are we gonna spend more for a fourth one?
No, uh, the cars will be rotated and as officers get the training, they will be allowed to drive those cars that have the LPR cameras. So in essence, they'll be on the road twenty-four seven.
Yeah, but we could use more car, more readers, correct?
We could, but we stayed within the allotted budget that was approved by council to get what we could.
And and that's what they gave you for the ARP money?
Uh, this wasn't ARPA funds. This is Measure H funds to the tune of fifty thousand dollars.
Can we get some money from the ARP fund either now or later?
Uh, that's that's something we can examine as we, uh, get into the second part of ARPA spending plan.
Cause I think, uh, with all the activity we have with people, automobiles and drunk drivings and shootings and what have you in the city. Uh, identifying somebody right away or a stolen vehicle. That's a plus for anybody in town and even law enforcement. All right, thank you.
Christopher, is there any other members of the public?
No.
Christina, do we have any hands raised?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, I bring this back to the council.
Move to adopt, move to adopt resolution twenty twenty-two thirty-six.
Second.
Roll call please.
Council member Casey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silveira.
Yes.
Council member Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you very much. No unfinished business. Moving on to public hearing. Item number eleven. A request to table the public hearing for the city council consideration of a proposal for rezoning of the property located at the northeast corner of heat of East Hatch Road and Golf Links Drive to modify the existing MX two mixed use to zoning designation to the ACC Community Commercial Zoning Designation within the Mitchell Road Corridor Specific Plan. And to consider an appeal of the planning commission's decision approving investing tentative parcel map and a specific plant site plan entitlement involving the subdivision of two point sixteen acres commercial uh, plant site entitlement involving, excuse me, uh, zone site into three parcels with the new commercial building proposed for each parcel. At the March twenty-eight council meeting, this public hearing was continued to April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. Regular council meeting subsequently, the applicant had appeal, uh, appealed have requested to table the matter for indefinitely. Uh, Christopher Home, I believe you have a comment in regards to this item, correct?
Uh, yes, so we received, uh, written, uh, confirmation from the attorneys for both, uh, the applicant and the appellant of this project, uh, confirming that, uh, their wishes are to continue this item. Um, this afternoon, I received an email from Ken Thornberry, who's the appellant. Uh, in his email, he he said that he did not agree with the indefinite continuance. Um, I asked him for clarification since I had, uh, received a communication from his attorney stating otherwise. And I did not receive, um, at least to the last time I checked, uh, my email recently, I I hadn't received a response from Mr. Thornberry. Um, so with that, um, staff's recommendation is to, um, continue this item and, um, we can hear from the public and that's that's where we're at. Thank you.
Counsel, do we have any questions? See none. Okay, the public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the chambers that would like to make a comment? Nobody in the chambers, Christopher?
No.
Okay. Um, anyone on Zoom? Any hands raised that would like to make a comment?
There is one hand or two hands raised. Uh, Mr. Thornberry, I will unmute your mic.
As mentioned earlier, with respect to the city council and Linda Rhino, we did and do agree with a temporary continuance. Very clearly do. Uh, in hopes of the resolve, we hope that we can come up with uh, something in item number twelve to to move this on and get it resolved as soon as possible. As I stated, we are, we are on hold on a lot of thought-out plans to improve River Oaks and make our community very proud of it. But, uh, on moving on to that, I'm gonna have to ask, uh, I know you're a very busy man, Chief Collins. I would like you to please ask the staff to review and report on safety and traffic study prior to the amended Mitchell Road Corridor Plan. I've requested for copies of those studies. And they do not seem to exist. And that's that's all. Thank you very much.
Christina is the other party on Zoom?
I am not sure, but we do have one more hand raised from Mr. Osgood. Mr. Osgood, I will unmute your mic.
So this thing's been going on for quite some time. So I guess what they're asking now, I'm just looking for clarification is that we we continue to table this moving into the future? Is that the case?
Mayor, if you like, I can answer that question.
Yes, absolutely.
Um, the attorneys from the applicant and the appellant have, uh, are both in discussions right now. And they agreed together that they need more time to deliberate on this. So they both, uh, jointly requested that this be continued to a date uncertain. Um, th- this would, uh, this would mean that we will have to, um, provide public notice whenever this does come back to the city council, uh, for a final decision. Uh, but for now, they they're asking for more time.
Okay, so they're in their own negotiations about a zoning issue in the city? Because aren't we, aren't we deciding as a council on what the the planning commission already decided zoning wise? So i- am I understanding correctly that we're allowing these two private parties to now negotiate how we're going to handle deciding what zoning is going to be?
If I can chime in, uh, the applicant has every right to appeal and we want to make sure that they do figure out the the couple of issues that they have before they bring it back. So that we can make a decision.
Understand that.
Mayor Council, i- if I could, it it's not, it's broader than it's to negotiate the project, which I can't, I don't think would result in any zoning change. It's just to see if they can make a a deal, for lack of a better term, to, uh, remove the appellate's opposition to the project in general. And I think Mr. Thornberry is, you know, when you hear the word indefinite, it indicates could be a long time. He's saying he just doesn't want that to be a long time. I think everybody agrees with that.
Right, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not disputing their their right to to ask the city to address the zoning issue. Right? So the negotiations between the two parties is is secondary to what the hearing is about, is it not? I mean, the planning commission decided X, we're asking the the city council to either reaffirm or deny that in this hearing, correct? And we continue to to push our processes off because these two private individuals are are negotiating, you know, so-called settlements between them that have nothing to do with the governance of the city or the way this works. Do you see my my confusion in this? I don't know if Mr. Helen and understands what I'm saying or or.
I I would just add, remember, uh, most of the continuances were because of the, uh, lack of having a full council.
Um, can I try?
Right, and we're we're back in that position now, so I understand that. But that's not the reason we're being asked to continue it indefinitely now. We're being asked to continue something indefinitely now because because the two parties are trying to decide together how the project will move forward. How the project will move forward or be built out has nothing to do with what the planning commission said they will allow in the zoning change or whether the council will decide that they're going to reaffirm that position and allow the zoning change. Right? So what we're doing here is is irrelevant to the wishes of the appellant or the applicant at this point. We are, we are, we are stopping our city process to see if they can come to some sort of agreement. Regardless of their agreement, what we want as a city zoning wise is not dependent upon that. You guys understand where I'm coming from?
I believe so, and I believe that's not inconsistent with what both the city and the parties are trying to do.
I guess I don't understand what what's happening then because they're in private negotiations. And and we're going to stop deciding how we're going to zone something based on those private negotiations for an indefinite period of time. Why can't we just decide what the zoning is going to be? Is he challenging the zoning? Or is he challenging as an appellant? What what the man's going to be allowed to build or not build or how he builds that out? Because then we have a private property rights issue. This thing is morphed into something much larger than it than it should be. I'm not trying to convince anyone of anything. I'm just trying to understand that in my mind, this is what happening and get that conversation going in y'all's minds. So I guess that's really all I got.
Okay. I believe I see Councilmember Klein's hand is raised. Christina?
Well, you know, my comment on this thing is we're not stopping the progress of the city. This is two private individuals on private property that one bit, one, one decision affects the other decision. So before this can be moved forward, they've got to come come up with an idea of how both things can work together. This is not a city project that you're holding up the city on. This is private individuals that you're affecting both businesses. So I think it's the best interest of the council to go ahead and continue this. But I think that we need to work with Christopher and make a determination that we revisit this, whether it's three months or six months to keep away from this indefinacy where each party has the right to keep on pushing the contingency off by putting by putting an indefinite thing on here. I think we need to be able to redress it, you know, whether it's three months down the road or four months down the road and see where the two parties uh, and can come together.
Christina, I believe we have Vice Mayor hand raised as well to make a comment.
Yeah, I somewhat agree with Councilmember Klein. Um, we are supposed to determine the appeal of planning commission decision. I am not ready to make a, uh, judgment on that appeal. I understand what the project may be, may look like and what it may include. And I I support indefinite continuation, knowing that the either party or both have to apply for a public hearing. Request for the agenda in the future. So I don't see any reason to put a date on it because they're gonna have to to basically start over with putting it on the agenda whenever they come to a conclusion. Thank you.
Yeah. Councilmember Casey, do you have any comments, sir? No. Okay. Okay, the, uh,
Hands raised, yes.
Okay, two more hands raised. Okay, thank you.
Cam Thornberry, I will unmute your mic. Cam?
I I did. Can you hear me now?
Yes. Yes, we can.
This this item on the agenda was really about the appeal we made against the zoning. It has nothing to do with the applicant. It has to do with us trying to protect our golf course's driving range where the applicant wants to build a dense commercial building in front of it. Thus, it will kill our golf course. Thus, it will kill a golf course for the city of Series. Thus, it will kill the revenue that we provide. And it sounds like that the city would be willing to trade out the revenue we provide for the revenue that the applicant would provide. But this is about zoning. This is not about what kind of decision we can come to with the applicant. I think that, you know, we have turned this completely around to be something different than what it is. It is about zoning. And for whatever reason, it was a bad decision by the planning commission. Um, and, uh, you know, we're trying to reverse a bad decision. It wa- I'm sorry that the man bought the land. But the problem is, he saw what was there and he bought the land anyway, and it's going to try to change the landscape. It doesn't work. So that is all I have, and I hope that you are listening, and I hope that the applicant is listening as well. Thank you.
Thank you. You said you had one more hand raised, uh, Christina?
Yes, Kenneth Thornberry, I will unmute your mic.
Mr. Helen. Brett, I appreciate your comments.
Kenneth, your your mic is still muted.
Here we go. I'll start over. I lost ten seconds. Is it working now?
It's working.
Okay, I'd like to say thank you, Mr. Helen and Klein and, uh, Brett, you guys, I think you've got it pretty spot on. A few things, a lot of things were not mentioned, but in this meeting, everything was necessary was mentioned. Mr. Osgood, right now, we're waiting on the attorneys. And we're we're putting out a lot of money for a for a decision to be brought forth. And earlier in the meeting, we said that out of respect for the city council and Ms. Rhino, we allowed for this to be continued. We certainly do not want a continuance any longer than necessary because we have a lot at stake. But in any case, we're waiting for the council to be full five members, so it can be decided at final and not waste a lot of people's times. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Christina, is the applicant online that you can, do you see the attorney or the applicant online?
Yes, he has his hands raised, as does Mr. Osgood.
Okay, let's go ahead and have the attorney raise attorney's hand, please.
Mr. Romano, I will unmute your mic.
Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, Mayor, yeah, just on behalf of, uh, Mr. Singh in River Oaks Plaza, we also consent to the indefinite continuance. Um, indefinite sounds like a long time, but what indefinite means is it's just not date certain. Uh, we can return, you know, back to the council on short notice with, uh, with ten-day notice. Um, so, uh, at this point, we would just ask that you grant this continuance, give us a chance to communicate a little longer and um, just in response to Mr. Osgood, the council makes the ultimate determination regarding both the project and the zoning. Um, but there are some conditions and some, uh, relationship issues that should the council uh, approve the project are important to River Oaks. And so those discussions are going on, but not regarding whether or not the project approves. That decision lies with the council and will be made when we just have resolution of other, uh, minor issues between the two parties. So.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Osgood, I'll go ahead and give you, uh, a minute to respond. I know you had your hand raised patiently. Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Osgood, I have unmuted your mic.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I just want everybody to understand. I I absolutely know this is a zoning thing. Regardless of of what each party would like, uh, extra time, this or that, give them their extra time. But at a certain point, your job as a council is to address that issue of zoning. They can figure out whatever building issues and we can revisit whether we're going to allow that, that architecture or the placement of buildings later. Zoning is separate from, from permitting and building issues. That's, that's my standpoint. We need to decide the zoning at a certain point and, and wrap that up. Regardless of their, of their agreement, we decide what the zoning is on a, on the council and the planning commission. And I hope everyone understands I'm not trying to stop a project or, or complete a project. Just give you my viewpoint on how things should function. Thank you for the extra time, Mr. Mayor. I hope you all have a wonderful evening.
Okay, is there anyone else, Christina, that has their hands raised?
There is one more hand raised. Candace Fernandez, I will unmute your mic.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
Yeah, um, listening to the conversations, I just want to make sure that the council considers the neighborhood here as well. Uh, with myself living here at River Oaks and all of the neighbors and I know one of the one big thing that hit me when this was first proposed was the traffic issue and how it would affect the entering and exiting um out onto Hatch Road and it's it's not good for us at all. I don't think it's good for the golf course. I don't know if perhaps, as this, maybe, maybe the traffic issue has changed. I don't know that anybody would have looked at it since the project hasn't gone forward. But at the very first um introduction of this to us, when it was supposed to be MX and not commercial. Even at that point, as far as the um traffic, that, that is a very big concern. And, and just what it will bring to um the neighborhood are big concerns for the neighborhood. So I just really hope that the council will consider the neighborhood as well as the golf course as they go through this um consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina, any more hands?
There are no more hands raised on Zoom.
Okay. Um, just to double check, anybody in the council?
Uh, there are none. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, the public hearing is now closed. I will bring this item back to the council. Um, if the council so chooses, we can go ahead and motion the table this item uh to an uncertain date. If we didn't get a motion.
I will move to grant the request to table the public hearing for the city council consideration for the proposal, the rezoning of the property located on northeast Hatch Road to an indefinite um time.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Silveira?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
And Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Moving on to new business, item number 12, council discussion and action fulfilling city council District Two vacancy. Uh, Helen Anne.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, I know you're all familiar with the this request. This, this one has a little bit of a twist uh because of the timing. As you might recall, there are two ways to fill a council vacancy. One is by appointment and one is by calling special election. In this case, because of the lateness uh of the resignation, a special election option is not available. You, you do have an option to appoint, and we have given you some uh potential timelines uh to address that option. Now, there's a third option which is regularly followed. Uh, well, there's really no law on this. It says what happens if you don't appoint at this late time in the game. Uh, it, it, again, it does happen quite often. I know it's happening in another city right now. So uh you have that, uh, it, it's really a replacement of the second option. Instead of the special election, you have the option to just to keep it vacant. So uh again, knowing you've dealt with this issue for the third time now uh in a short period, I'll uh just take any of your questions, I think, at this point.
Okay. If we have any members of the public that would like to make a comment on this item in the dais?
Yes, we have one.
Okay, thank you.
I hope I'm addressing the right thing.
Number 12.
Council consideration of options to fill the council.
Yes. Uh, from what I understand, there's three options there. Of course, we don't want to go to number three. Uh, I think they should do like they did in earlier this year, I believe it was, or late last year. They should uh have people apply. Get out what information you can for people that want to be applicants on District Two we're talking about. And uh, go from there and uh hopefully we'll have some candidates uh that want to serve the community instead of maybe just one. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
John Warren, City of Series, District One. I would suggest to the council to leave this seat vacant until the general election on November the eighth. At which time the residents of District Two can vote and decide who they want to fill this position. By the time the council goes through the motions up to 60 days, we're almost into June, July. And um, the person they might select would be, if they do a selection process, um, they're in that position maybe for just a short period of time and really couldn't bring a lot to the council. So my suggestion would be to leave the post vacant and let the voters of District Two make that decision in November and select the person they want to represent them. Thank you.
Thank you. Christopher, do we have any other members in the public that would like to make a comment?
No.
Christina, let's bring it back to any members on Zoom with their hands raised.
We have two hands raised on Zoom. Mr. Osgood, I will unmute your mic.
Thank you very much. So we have had some resignations in the recent history, and we've handled those with uh somewhat the same process. And keeping with the precedent that the council, this very council has established. My first option would be to open it up to applicants to go through that applicant process. My second option would be to concur with Mr. Warren. Say we leave it vacant. When we do that, we have to consider that that seat's going to be vacant, not only through November, but through January. So we have a vacant seat with no representation for District Two for nine months. I want to point that out. District Two, you will have no representation with the, the vacant seat for nine months. In a district scenario, District One's rep does not speak for you. District Three's rep does not speak for you, and District Four's rep does not speak for you. You have no legitimate representation at that point. I've said that over and over again. Again, my first choice would be to use the precedent we've already established out of fairness for District Two and go with the applicant appointment process. How you guys decide will show what honor, integrity that you have going into an election and subsequent elections in two more years. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Christina, we have another member on Zoom, correct?
Yes, we do. EX Gaming, I will unmute your mic.
Hi, um, this is Maria. My question is, uh, District Two, which area is that here in Series?
That is on the other side of the 99 freeway over by Cedar Valley High School, Blaker Kinzer, that area.
Okay, like the west side of Series, okay.
Into the old districting map still with this situation. There is, there is, there is a lot of it on this.
Yeah, yeah. Uh that's too bad that we have another empty seat. Um um, I would say I didn't want to go this way, but taking applications. Um, but we have to somehow, I don't know how you guys do it, announce it to the public. So people can do that. Um, there's only very few people who actually join um the city council meetings. So we have to let people know for that area. Um, and then if not, wait till election day. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Christina, do we have any other hands on Zoom?
Mr. Osgood, did you have another comment?
I did, ma'am, but uh Vice Mayor Silveira answered that, yes, we do need to deal with the uh the existing maps. The new maps are only for the election in November moving forward for the next 10 years. I, I'd like to thank uh Vice Mayor Silveira for pointing that out.
So besides Mr. Osgood, no, no other hands?
No more hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, just wanted to make sure Christopher, no one in the dais has any other questions. Just want to make sure.
No further.
Okay, now bring this back to the city council.
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Casey, I uh move that we open it up for appointment and as quickly as possible. But with the condition that somehow or another we get the word out. That's, I don't know, but yeah, I open it up for appointment. That's my suggestion. I don't know if you have a motion or not.
Um, any other comments from the council?
Yeah, this is Vice Mayor Silveira. We actually, in the last year and a half, don't actually have it. Something that we could consider, the way we've chosen to do it, we've done it. The two ways that uh are explained in the staff report. And the one way we haven't tried yet is waiting until the next election. If we were to go through an appointment process, that person would only probably be on the council for about five months. Um, I think uh we would be much better just to leave it vacant. Um, and then as Mr. Warren stated, let the people in District Two decide. Taking into account that it's looking a little different in November, which I think supports this uh a lot. So talking to some past council members over the years that were in this situation, my, my questions were, were did things come up that maybe you regretted leaving it open and you wish you would have appointed somebody and to a person, they agreed that with this little amount of time until the regular election in November, uh they were, they were glad that they had waited. So my recommendation is to leave it vacant until November.
Councilmember Quinn?
You know, I can, I can concur with the Vice Mayor Silveira. You know, I think the issue is we start doing this uh and we get somebody to apply. We have the chance of going through what recently just happened with possibly a two-two vote or we look at it because we have to worry about the old district and we appoint somebody in the old district, then they're out of the race. They have to go to, if they want to be on the council again, stay in District Four instead of District Two, that, you know, I think that uh uh, we should uh just wait till the next general election. Uh, because of the rematch, because of the redistricting and the way the maps are drawn out now.
Thank you, Councilmember. I, I agree with both of you. We should most definitely just wait until November. For those very same reasons, and I won't repeat the very same reason, but yes. So council, if there's a motion on the floor?
It's not a resolution, but I'll make a motion to leave the council seat to vacant until the November election.
Well, I would second the motion, but before we do that, Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Casey had a motion on the floor. Uh, you've got to determine that it was, it died because of a lack of a second.
Mr. Casey, I didn't, I, sorry if I didn't catch that there was a motion on the floor. My apologies, sir. Is that correct, Casey?
That's correct.
Okay, can we get a second for Councilmember Casey's uh motion? Seeing, seeing no second, it dies. Um, any other council members would like to make another motion? Once again.
My apologies, Mr. Casey. I didn't realize that you had made a motion either, but I'll now make the motion again to leave the spot. Is the District Two City Council position open until the November election?
And I second that.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Casey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silveira?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
And Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion passes three, one.
Moving on to item number 13, Resolution Number 202237, approving an employment agreement with Alex Taraza for the position of city manager. Do we have any members of the public that would like to make a comment on this item?
No one in the uh council chambers.
We have one hand raised on Zoom.
Go ahead.
Mr. Osgood, I will unmute your mic.
Well, I, I spoke with my representative, Mr. Klein, and some depth today about, about my opinions on the subject. I just need to say that Alex and my working relationship did not start out well, but as Alex is with the city that, that our communication has improved and we are starting to be able to work very well together. I wish all parties the best in making the decision. My point of view has no bearing on who you choose to be our employee. We vested that interest in you, but I'd just like to say that that where there was a rocky start, Alex and I seem to have a very good relationship now, and I appreciate him for allowing that to develop into something less strenuous than it was in the beginning. I think that's a positive. So, thank you.
Okay. Any other members, Christina?
There are no more hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, it looks like a member of the public is now stepping up to go ahead.
Thank you, Council. John Warren, City of Series. I would like to comment that I kind of reviewed the uh contract uh for employment as far as compensation goes uh for the proposed city manager. And I think personally for the size of the city of Series that I think the salary is a little too high. Um, I don't think that the person in that position should be compensated for driving back and forth to work. In other words, uh, an allotment for an automobile. In this particular case, the gentleman lives uh a ways out of town. And I know that when I was employed, no one uh paid me a stifling to drive back and forth to work. No one also paid for my life insurance. I think the salary at over $200,000 a year is more than enough compensation for the person to drive their own personal vehicle to work and to pay for their own life insurance. I think when they're doing city business within the city or even traveling that a, a city authorized automobile would be more than appropriate for those occasions uh when one is needed. That is my thought on the, uh, that part of the contract. Thank you very much.
Okay, any other members in the public? Okay, I bring this back to the council. I believe Councilmember Klein had his hand raised first. Go ahead.
Yeah, you know, in reviewing the contract, I do have some concerns. As I was informed, the contract was presented to Alex and he wanted to review it with his attorney and made some adjustments. Not knowing what those adjustments are, I would like to have some time to set with the city attorney and to go over the changes that were made. So I would, I would, I would ask that the council would table this item until the next city council meeting in May. So I would, I would, I would ask that the council would table this item until the next city council meeting in May. That we can ratify the contract then. I also have a concern with Exhibit A on page six, item number three. The compensation if Alex chooses not to take the city provided healthcare. The contract states for five and a half percent of his annual salary, which equates to eleven thousand five hundred dollars a year. When that is offered to other employees at only two hundred dollars a month or twenty-four hundred dollars a year. And I look at that healthcare for when individual is not worth, you know, is worth the same by, to all individuals. So I would like to have, you know, I, I talked to the city attorney last week and he was out of town for. An engagement. So I would like to have time to sit down with the attorney, city attorney and go over what the contract changes were. And, you know, the reasoning behind the item three on page six.
Helenan, real quick, before we move on to Councilmember Casey, is this something that. We should go back into negotiations or I just want to make sure I wanted to clarify, or is this, is this going to be okay? Mr. Mr. Klein is requesting to table the item for, so he can further look into the contract.
That's always appropriate. I can't say the changes were minor. I, I can't answer the last question, but overall the changes were, were few and minor. We could always go back. We can table it. It's council's, council's call.
Okay. Councilmember Casey, go ahead, sir.
You're muted, Councilmember Casey. Try holding down this.
Okay, I, I, I have had a pre-election time. Conversations with Alex and I, I appreciate the job that he's done under the circumstances that he's had to work with. However, I, I've asked the city attorney. I don't know, half a dozen times, when can we meet and discuss his contract so we can approve it? And it was given different dates. I, I expected a. Private. Hearing to go over the, the contract. And, and again, it goes back to the communication that I feel our city. Well, and I as a council member, we don't do that well to communicate with the general public about things. We got this agenda item sometime on Thursday. I was surprised to see it as a resolution for us to vote tonight to approve it. I fall back again to the, to the attorney. I was given the impression. That we were going to meet in a, in a private session, closed session, I rather, and also. Initially, Councilmember Rhino and the mayor were the executive committee to draw up to commit the contract and go back and forth. So I don't remember, Mr. Mayor, that you, once Councilmember Rhino resigned. You appointed a secondary person to fill that seat. For that reason, I, I probably, I'm not able to vote to approve it. Nothing against Alex, but against the process in which this was brought before us. Thank you.
So, so from what I'm gathering, two council members have not had enough time to review those changes, correct? Klein and Casey.
Well, I don't know what the changes are. You know, and, you know, and, and I, I did talk to the city attorney last week and he was getting ready to go out of town on an engagement. So I would like to sit down with him one-on-one, face-to-face and review the contract and the changes. And go from there. That's why I asked that just this be tabled till the next city council meeting, the first city council meeting in May.
Out of respect to the two council members that have had not enough time to review the changes on the agreement. I, I will respectfully agree. Council, Vice Mayor, do you have any comments, sir, before we?
I'm fine with it as written, but if everybody else wants to continue, it looks like it's going to be continued.
Okay, there you go. If we can go ahead and get a motion.
There is one hand raised on Zoom.
Oh, there is one more hand raised on Zoom. Okay, and before that hand is raised, obviously Alex, you are hearing the, the discussion and. I wasn't sure if you wanted to make any comments at all, if you.
Uh, no, I, it's at, at the, at the pleasure of the council. If it's, if it's the direction to table the agreement. Absolutely, at the pleasure of the council. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Just wanted to make sure. And then Helenan, is there any additional comments you wanted to make, sir, before I, I just want to make sure I do respectfully. Before I move on to that Zoom comment.
No, nothing there.
And, and who, and is that hand raised?
Yes, Mr. Thornberry, I will unmute your mic.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, gentlemen. I lowered my hand. With the conversation you had, I lowered my hand.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
No problem. Okay, if we can go ahead and get a motion to table this item.
I would like to make a motion that Resolution twenty twenty-two thirty-seven be tabled and brought back before the city council on their May ninth. Meeting.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Yes.
Councilmember Silveira.
No.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion passes three, one.
Mr. Mayor, one comment if I may.
Absolutely, sir. Go ahead.
I, I think Mr. Thornberry asked where he might be able to, to find a copy of the agreement. I just want to note that the, the, a copy of the agreement is available online with the agenda packet. And when the agreement, proposed agreement is brought, brought back, it will also be available.
Okay. We're now moving on to Resolution number twenty twenty-two thirty-eight, ratifying the appointment of Kevin Wong to the position of Director of Engineering. Did I pronounce that last name right, Alex?
Kevin Wong, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, okay. Want to make sure. Go ahead, sir.
I, I think that's the correct pronunciation. So this item before the council this evening is a resolution ratifying the appointment of, of. I'll just say Kevin at this point. To the bit position of Director of Engineering. Mr. Wong comes to the city with extensive experience. In capital project management and experience in both the public and private sectors. Mr. Wong has managed significant capital projects for several school districts. In California and again has extensive capital project management experience in the private sector as well. Mr. Wong has a Bachelor of Science degree in civil engineering from CSU Chico. A master's degree in civil engineering from University of Idaho, an MBA from University of Hawaii. And a JD from Solomon P. Chase College of Law. Based on Mr. Wong's experience, recommending the council's ratification of Mr. Wong's engineering director. And, and ratification or approval of the agreement, employment agreement as well. The salary range where Mr. Wong would, would come in it, in is range J eighty-nine step B. Which is twelve thousand one hundred and twelve dollars a month or a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars and three. Hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars a year. Mr. Wong would also receive a twelve percent educational incentive for his master's degree. So with that, recommending approval of, of the resolution ratifying the, the appointment and the agreement for Mr. Wong. Available for any questions. Mr. Mayor, I think you're muted. Mr. Mayor, I think you're muted.
Thank you for letting me know that I'm muted. Now I bring this item back to the chambers. Any members of the public that would like to make a comment?
No.
Okay, see you none. Christina?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, and I'll bring this back to the council. Any comments from the council?
I'll make a, I'll make a resolu-. I'll make. There you go. I, I'll make a motion to accept Resolution twenty twenty-two thirty-eight.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silveira.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion passes four, zero.
Do we have any council member referrals today? Seeing none. Moving on to reports, I have no reports. Any members of city council have any reports? See you none. Alex, you have any reports, sir?
Just encourage folks to sign up for Love Series on Saturday. It's great. Great volunteer opportunities. Thank you to the, to the committee that's organized Love Series. I, I think that will have a significant impact on the community. So thank you to everyone. And thank you for everyone's indulgence and patience for the Zoom meeting this evening. Technical difficulties. We do have glitches with technology at times and appreciate everyone's patience this evening. In the format of the council meeting. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. City Attorney? Okay. Any members of our department? Doesn't look like it. And I was told that our county supervisor and assistant were not available. And that concludes our meeting. This meeting is now adjourned. Have a blessed day, everyone. Thank you.